About a year ago, when I told you that if you don't consolidate, your tax bills are gonna go way up.
Yeah.
We're here.
Okay.
Here we are.
Even though our budget is flat.
Your budget is flat?
I wanna make that clear.
The Athens Grafton budget?
Is flat.
Well, yeah, it's only up by...
It's past, it's under...
Eight thousand...
Yeah, it's under 1%.
Right. Eight thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars is how much the Athens Grafton budget is up. And that's after all the pay increases, all the insurance, all everything. But, as you knew, and as I told you at the time, you were about to get hit on both sides by seventh, eighth grade tuition costs. So... The way that worked out, I'm starting with Grafton. And Edie has all these documents. So, seventh, eighth tuition is up in Grafton to... It's up, uh... Sixty thousand dollars. Now, both of these figures are throwing in an extra student, which has always been our practice.
Right.
You know, 'cause... So, that's what one extra can... The assessment started to swing back towards Grafton for this budget. We had talked about that before. So, the Athens Grafton contract assessment is up by forty-four thousand four hundred nineteen.
For Grafton?
For Grafton, yeah.
So, the assessment...
Yeah.
And the assessment went, is up forty-four thousand, did you say?
Forty-five four nineteen.
Forty-five K, yeah, alright.
You'll have all these documents.
And that, it went from how, it went from what percentage to what percentage? Do you have that?
That's about an eight percent, uh, increase in your... In the...
Eight percent in the mix, okay.
Yeah, in that number alone. So, since it's a flat budget, that's... Of course, there's some other things in there because we took the... We figured the surplus against Athens Grafton revenue. Excess costs are up a little bit. This is for grades seven and eight. So... And you've got a small deficit to, uh, pay off, although it's less than the one before. So, it's actually to the good side. So, Grafton's... As it stands, Grafton's, uh, town budget would be up one hundred and twenty-five thousand six forty-three for a total of one million three thousand eight hundred three dollars.
That was the last figure, you made what?
One, uh...
Three oh eight?
One million three thousand eight hundred three dollars there. I don't know what to tell you, you know, what you can do about this, 'cause it's all about grades seven and eight, and it's all about the joint...
Yeah, yeah.
A little bit of share your joint contract. I did a... Off the, literally back of a napkin, uh, tax rate calculation, 'cause we have some of the figures for the tax, cheap, but not all of them, but we have your equalized pupils.
Right.
And, um... So, if nothing changed, it looked... And this is, we don't know what CLA will do, but it looked like your tax rate would go up about fourteen cents right now.
Now, is that fourteen cents on top of the projected eighteen cents that we think is coming down from the state?
I haven't heard any figure of eighteen cents.
No, I heard eight.
Fourteen would just be yours, and then whatever the state does.
Yeah, alright.
In Athens, let's share about, uh, in front of you. If you can see your problems in Athens, I think best by looking at the revenue report. So, first of all, you don't have a surplus to apply this year. So, that leaves you fifty-four thousand one eighty in the whole rate to start with. That was part of the information I gave you back at the beginning of the process, 'cause we knew that. Both towns actually, because you have one more year of the small school grant, it actually increased a little bit. That went up a little bit. Next year, there's no guarantee of the... When you're budgeting, there's no guarantee of the small school grant. And that could be another...
How much is this small, can you... Which number is this small grant? Is that the education...
It's line four on your revenue report. And then flipping over to the expense report for Athens, um, there you see...
Oh, baby.
So, um... You've got a five oh four expense of twenty-four thousand. In grade seven and eight, you've got a, uh, increase of seventy-five thousand dollars in seventh and eighth tuitions. Again, that's with one extra student. You can knock it down by fifteen thousand dollars. You didn't wanna do that. Your contract assessment, Athens Grafton contract assessment is actually down a little bit. Preschool tuition is down a little bit. So... And then you've got, the other thing, and Edie told you about this a couple of meetings ago on the back page of that, is we had a mistake with more of a deficit should've been paid off this year in Athens than was. And we have to make that up, so we've kind of split the difference by taking that amount, adding it to... There is a small deficit from last year anyway. Taking half of that, so we've put twenty-five seven oh eight in there for this coming budget year. And the year after that, you would have to, once again, budget twenty-five seven oh eight. And then you'll be back to zero.
Which number is that?
That's, uh, line fourteen in your, the Athens expense.
Oh, I got it, yep. So, there you go. So, there at a hundred thirty-one K.
Right, which is a fourteen percent budget difference. And again, with the back of the napkin calculation, um, everybody's sitting down, right? With the numbers we know, it looked like a twenty-nine cent tax increase. Ooh, okay, through it. And that was all with, you know, the SU coming in, actually, and most of your assessments were level or down, right? So, the SU didn't increase your budget. It's grade seven and eight tuition that...
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, if you look at the Athens Grafton budget, the Athens Grafton budget didn't do anything.
Right.
So, this is, it's all stuff that's happening below the Ath... Below at the Athens Grafton level.
Yeah.
So, it's all happening at the individual town levels.
We've had this pig in the python problem on a number of past occasions, 'cause we've had these wild variations in middle school expenses in the past. Doesn't make it any easier, but there they are.
And we knew they were coming. I mean, we sat at town meeting and told everybody that. But...
I think, you know, I mean, that's the, that's what she paid for choice. And I think people had been told that pretty bluntly. And, I mean, on the flip side of this, that three years from now, that number's gonna go in the other direction presumably.
One year from now.
Yeah, and sharply, so... And that might actually be the one reason to take a hard look at that, at that extra student provision, since presumably there's a good reason to think that you can pick up some of that and essentially stand off a little bit of this, because there will be that shift. Of course, you have to assume that a family of twenty won't live in town.
Yeah, I would recommend against that. And because every time you, you know, if you cut it to the bone, if either town cuts it to the bone and pulls that out, sure as hell, you're gonna, then you wind up with a deficit.
Well, yeah.
And then you'll have a carryover deficit going into the next year.
Right, but you, but you're, but you're, but the spike will get at least a little bit amortized. I mean, I, I, I take the point, it's not, it's, it borders on not fantastically responsible budgeting to do that. And I would be absolutely open to hearing that, that argument. I'm just thinking that, since we know, we know that there should be a drop going the other direction next year. I think that what's hard for businesses, what's hard for homeowners, is to, is, is the big wobble year to year to year. And the things to do to stand it down. I tend to think that's not a bad idea.
It's only gonna go down by a tiny bit, though, I mean, it's, it's like the class size between who will be eighth graders next year and who will be seventh graders next year. Between right now is small.
No, 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 no. Yeah, the difference is, the kids who are going into, how many kids are going into ninth grade?
Yep.
Versus how many kids are going into seventh grade?
Right.
Those are your two numbers to compare.
Yeah, there's only four different, the number is only, is only different by four.
So, there's four, so in other words, we'll go, we'll pick up four students, right?
Four less, yeah.
Four less students.
Four or five less, yeah.
Okay.
That's forty-eight thousand dollars roughly, you know, ballparky, isn't it? I mean, that's, that's the reason why it's, it's not a...
I couldn't tell you the split across towns right now off of that number, but...
Alright, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, a little bit, I mean, you know...
It's a little bit.
It's a little bit. I don't, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't making a quantitative judgment. It's just a little. It's not like cut in half or anything, but...
Yeah, so it'll make some move, right?
Yep.
Okay.
The other thing, and we've seen this kind of more, I don't know if we've seen it here, so we certainly saw it in Westminster, whereas because of Act, it seems like because of Act forty-six receiving so much publicity, people are more aware about towns offering choice in grades seven and eight, and there's been more move-in action. I don't know how you feel about people moving in to take advantage of choice in grades seven and eight, but it's...
Been happening for years.
It's been happening for years, and it happened a great deal in Westminster this past year. That's part of their issues right now. And I don't know, you never know. But there is sort of more of a bright light shining on it.
Um, yeah, okay, so you haven't done any tax calculations as of yet?
Just the only one I can do is the one I did.
That little, yeah, right, right.
Because I don't, we don't have...
We're not anywhere close.
We don't have CLA.
Right.
We don't have the dollar yield figure, right? And I would say, the, I was just using last year's tax sheet to do this, and actually, Athens would've gone over the threshold.
That's what I was gonna ask. That was my next question, is how close are we to threshold?
Well, you weren't, but Athens went over. But I don't know what the threshold amount will be.
Right.
You know, it's too early to say that that's gonna be in the mix, but it could be. It was, it was with that little...
So, what is, so what happens if it comes out that we are over the threshold?
Uh, you have to, in a... How's it work? In addition, the amount over, you...
Get double taxed on.
You get double taxed on. So, if you had a hundred, is it by student, is that?
Yeah, it's by equalized student.
Equalized pupil, yeah, we shouldn't say, we have to use equalized pupil.
Yep, yep.
So, let's say you had a hundred equalized pupils, and you were five hundred dollars over the threshold amount.
Right.
It would be a hundred minus five hundred, fifty, what's that, like, fifty thousand dollars additional. But we don't, it's too early to worry about that, kind of, because the threshold amount changes from year to year.
Who determines that? Or what determines that?
It's, that is based on the average.
Trying to remember the exact formula, but it's, it has to do with the state average. And then they increase it...
Equalized pupil.
Yeah. Then they increase it by the NEAP and the New England Economic Person.
And then they allow you to, to exceed that up to a point, a certain percentage of.
Right.
And so, I forget what the, whether they were gonna tie it up. I don't think they did.
I think we're back to the way it was before all the pullback and, yeah.
Miss P, you're picking a question, is it, is it possible to independently calculate this, or at least come within an order of magnitude?
It's not worth it.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to...
We'll have the figures.
Budget doesn't have to be approved until January.
Yeah, I mean, it really is.
Just thinking in terms of planning, it's kind of, you know, have some ideas, the size of the train is kind of...
No, because it's based on state figures, educational costs per student.
Didn't think it was, thought we'd had this conversation, but thought I'd ask anyone.
By next week, we'll, we should know what the real figures are.
Alright.
Yeah, we may not get the CLA though until after Christmas.
That's usually late. That comes from the tax department, not from the...
Violation last year, you were so late, if I recall.
Yeah, I think they were later than usual last year, yeah. I don't know.
Peachy.
Okay. There you go.
Not, not a good situation.
That's what it is.
The interesting thing now, that when I calculate the assessment, and I have to break out grades seven and eight from the equalized pupils and any secondary weighting, um, the last, I don't know, three years or so, Athens has been considerably higher than, um, Grafton. And they're almost the same, Athens is fifty point nine two, and Grafton is, um, forty-nine point oh eight, so...
And the equalized pupil count, so that's what determines how the assessment is.
Yeah.
From the joint contract.
Yeah.
And then the equalized pupil count is important to the tax calculation, because here...
Yeah, and then you'll get to count those, of course, as well as...
And we do have those numbers, and they only shift by a couple of, for each town.
Yeah, and Grafton had three more, almost three more seventh and eighth graders in Athens, which, which brought them, like, almost identical for, um, grade eight to six.
There's an argument for Athens and Grafton consolidation. One of the arguments, and a legitimate one, is that at least there's some smoothing of this wobble. Because, you know, you're, when, with the size of the individual towns, two more kids throws the thing off by a considerable amount, whereas at least there's some softening of that, of that variation when it's over a larger population. It may not be the most, you know, trenchant argument, but it's not a bad one if you're trying, if you'd like to be able to take your property taxes down one quarter of a year to year.
Well, in actuality, it helps Athens more than it helps...
Well, that was the other part.
It would help Athens, because they're spreading the cost. If the, if the, if the number of equalized pupils is approximately the same, they're spreading it across two-thirds of the numbers of voters that Grafton has. So, it's just, the, the impact would be, would be much better for Athens than it would be for Grafton.
That's absolutely true.
I mean, assuming, again, that we're, like, splitting them.
Well...
And it all depends on where the seventh and eighth graders lie. If the seventh and eighth graders lie more in Grafton, you know, then it hurts Athens, you know...
Yeah, I mean, once you're unified, it doesn't matter anymore.
No.
It's really on the, the initial.
But it's the initial, the initial.
Because your tax rates are gonna go like that, and it...
And there's gonna be, both sides of those balances shift, and there's no getting around that. So, any argument for Grafton will probably be an argument, I mean, any argument for Athens is a bit of a one against Grafton, but at a certain point, you've gotta argue that what really kills everybody is these, the size of these hundred thousand dollar wobbles. And if you can soften that a little bit, it's not a bad thing. I know I'll hear about it when I go home.
You know who's coming?
Yep. Anything else on the budget?
Here.
This committee is in session.
I just wish it was better, yeah.
We kind of knew, you just didn't have the, you know, the dollar figure.
We get to know a man.
Well...
Well, when I knew it would be...
I knew it was gonna be a hundred to a hundred fifty, so I'm not, just, you know...
I was hoping it was gonna be less than it is, but...
Ten kids, you can do it right there.
The cautionary note, I would say, for people out there in TV land, is those tax figures I gave just now were just a calculation based on last year's tax sheet and some of the numbers that I had. It is, they are not the real tax numbers, and by the end of next week, we actually should have those and be able to send them to you. So, don't go onto social media right now and say the superintendent said that taxes are gonna go up by whatever I just said, because that probably is not the correct number. Gives you an idea. Good job having a level budget.
Yeah, that was outstanding. I thought it was, I thought it was gonna look better when I saw that. I was like, okay, this is an easy sell.
Did better than high school, did better than... That's you.
You know, you just follow the trends, right?
Exactly.
Um, but yeah, you know, it is what it is, right? And so, I mean, I'm gonna put it out there just so I know that I said it. Um, but one of the things that, um, I don't know if the board wants to discuss is whether or not we wanna fund a full-day summer school program, which would hit this guy. So, right now, the summer school is a half-day. Um, the first part of the morning is, um, funded by CFG, because it's academic math and reading. So, I know I've talked about it in previous meetings, but whether or not there is any interest and/or ability, given these... I always like to deliver things after the really bad news.
Well, how much we talking about?
Um, so, I think... I have, I need to look at what the teachers per diem rates are, but I can, I can have that for everyone.
What do you have in terms of demand? What is your, I mean, what are you hearing from parents? I think that would be important.
Sure, so I, we have about, for summer school last year, we had about a third of our students attend. No, a little less than that.
So, this year, we'd be talking about, what, twenty, twenty-five kids?
Maybe even a little less than that. Um, but one of the, one of the deciding factors for parents when they're figuring out what they want their child to do would also be, or what they can do is, one of the deciding factors is, is it a full-day program or is it a half-day program? Um, and so, that's a question that has come up in the past. So, that's just...
This would be the summer of two thousand nineteen, presumably, or is this, is this coming summer, or two thousand eighteen?
It would be this summer, yeah, because it starts after, in July.
Let's talk about where we should...
That is, for how many would that have?
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Yeah, so usually no more than twenty days.
So, the teachers?
Um, three. Well, two teachers, and then we all, and then I already put it in there. It's the same as last year's budget as well. I put a little, like, two grand in there for usually a summer helper, um, who typically has been a college student in the area, who's studying education, and, um, so they do this great little rotation.
What's your budget for that now?
So, I might fail to figure that out really quick.
It's funded right now.
Okay.
Let me do that right now.
Safer in my hand.
You like that?
Pretty impressive.
Yeah? You gonna have a guess?
Oh, no.
Twenty times four. Eighty-eight? Is that right? Eighty-eighty per person, so times two. So, seventeen hundred dollars or so?
Compared to everything else, that's actually not that big a deal.
Right, so if it's an extra three hours a day at twenty-eight dollars an hour, eighty-four times five days a week is four hundred and twenty dollars. Times four weeks is eight hundred and eighty dollars, times two people, that's seventeen sixty.
That would be our out-of-pocket.
Correct, yeah, local funds for this, for the summer school part.
So, probably two thousand.
So, I was gonna say, so about two K.
Plus whatever FICA and all that stuff.
Yeah. You're gonna throw that in, that's like forty percent right there.
Yeah, so, just throwing it out there, just, you know, something that we've discussed in the past, so...
Well, it does make it more available or attractive to parents.
Correct. If it's a full day.
And that staffing would accommodate how many kids?
Uh, so, in the past, it's accommodated, so three adults, we've had a little under twenty kids or right around twenty kids.
But, so, but what if we went, what I'm trying to get to is if we went to full-time?
Yep.
And they became more attractive?
Yes.
And now we had forty kids?
Right.
At what point do we have to add more people?
I don't think we would have to, 'cause if you were to divide, the way that they, they've rotated it, they, they do three sessions, and it's, and it's, they rotate through. So, I think if you divide, you know, three into forty, we're still talking about a very manageable number of kids, yeah.
Just wanna know what the breakpoint is.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're talking about, yeah, like I said, it's still a very manageable number of kids per adult.
I think the, if the demand is that much higher for, for a full-time program, that would, that's actually an argument in favor of the program as much as this cautionary on the cost.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, Jack, I just wanna make sure you put in... Honey, if, if, if we went up to, you know, if we went up to thirty and we needed another person?
No, no, the adding machine.
Then you don't put in two thousand, you put in three thousand.
Totally, totally with you.
I just don't wanna, don't wanna, if we're gonna do it, I don't want it to wind up as a deficit program, that's all. So, we got two minutes on this meeting.
What is?
Um, for currently that local teaching assistant, yeah.
That's the assistant.
Yeah, for the full day.
For a full day.
Yeah, for her, for a full day.
So, you just need the teacher?
Yes. Okay.
Anybody else have anything on the budget? We can still discuss this if we want to. Well, it's on, it's on the agenda anyway, but it will not come up for a vote until our January meeting, we have the tax figures.
Do you want this added into Nineteen's budget, or just leave it Nineteen's and... This?
Yeah, go ahead.
This.
Just trying to stay...
Well, actually, it has to go into Nineteen's.
Yeah, it would be Nineteen's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a little bringed it right there. I'm a little bringed at right now.
It's okay.
One more question?
Sure.
Edie, if it's possible, I know that we're putting online the information for meetings on, at the high school and at the S U, if it's possible to get that stuff someplace so it can be accessible online for folks, I didn't see any way to do that.
That would be a first question.
Or then maybe it's a good question, just, well, there's a couple of ways to do it.
Actually, this, the other day, a friend and Edie and Ed and I were meeting that maybe for the prospective superintendents. It might be nice to have just one folder that has the proposed budgets in it.
I'm totally with that.
Which is easy to create.
Okay.
And that way, they're all in one package.
Just so that.
That works.
There's a pointer that says, here they are.
Yeah, well, there's no reason not to do that, so everybody's budget would be in this one. But, once you get to the point where they're real.
All right.
Okay, so that one's done, we adjourn that meeting, and then you're up.
I guess I am.
For unification.
I'm gonna declare myself from the outset, I'm here under physical due arrest, so I'm here for the unification meeting and to make sure you got quorum. I'm up. So, we're here for the six o'clock unification meeting, I'm calling that order, I guess.
You are.
And, any adjustments to the agenda as presented? Chris, were you kind enough to make copies of that thing that I sent around?
I didn't make copies of your thing because I wasn't sure whether it was done, but.
Can I make some copies for you?
I could do that right now.
It's short and sweet.
I did make copies of the questions I sent out the other day, but I think your timeline is kind of the first quarter of business.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. So, what we're gonna establish here from the outset is, I guess, first, when we're done here, we'll make the call for public comments.
I know it's happening for you, although you have some public here. Not everybody's ever.
There's a couple of us, yeah, okay, thank you.
Do we have public here?
There are board members that are not committee members, that are technically public.
You're welcome to comment, I want one of those. Thanks. Okay, are there any questions from the non-unification committee, please? Members who are present and with respect to the process? Lynn, you're on the committee. I'm with somebody else. Jack, are you on the committee here?
Yeah, it's. Yeah, and Jack.
Lynn.
Lynn, Charles.
Lynn, Charles? I thought I was.
Is Charles in?
I think, yeah. Maybe it's you.
I don't, no, I can't, I can't understand.
So, from the outset, for the non-committee members who are here, do you have any comment on the situation? So far, has there been any feedback in the community, any questions? Nothing like that, right? Okay, so we'll move along swiftly to the superintendent's comments.
Just that, I came up with those questions, I sent them to you folks on the committee, and I sent them to the lawyer. I did not get a response, but the lawyer on them accepted.
You haven't heard anything back?
No, he said, those are good questions, Chris.
Okay.
Now you owe me a hundred bucks. You got my attention, hundred bucks.
Well, interestingly, one of the more, and I don't wanna derail the conversation, but one of the more interesting questions that, you know, was posed by one of the Rocky End Board members, who said, if Athens and Grafton become a unified district, does it affect Union High School membership or board makeup? And the more I thought about that, the more my mind kinda warped and bent, and I sent that to the lawyer, and I haven't gotten an answer back on that.
Okay, I mean, it does affect representation on the supervisory union.
That, we know, yes.
We know, but the high school.
Right, and so, I look back at the high school articles, and it was a vote of the town school districts that made them members of the Union High School Board.
Town school districts, okay.
So, if the town school district goes out of existence.
Then you have to vote yourself back in.
Yeah, I don't know what it, well, no, it's harder to get out of a Union High School district than it is to get in, but.
Consider that way.
Anyway, that's, I think the lawyer needs to weigh in on this, because we could conjecture endlessly.
Several towns have had to do this, where they did partial, you know, they've done these Q plus Q plus one kind of wonky things, and so it's, this is known space, I just.
Well, it is, you would think, and so, I sent that question, actually, to the superintendent, Donna Russo Savage and Nicole Mason. Donna Russo Savage sent me back such a complicated answer that I couldn't really understand that, because she's always kind of going, but if, you know, and, you know.
Chart your diagram, your paragraph.
Yeah, so, I just, I wanna.
So, it's a good point you're raising, what you're saying.
It was a great question, and I don't, maybe it's no big deal.
Perhaps, and I guess we'll find out what the lawyer says, but if we anticipate this during our formulations, so that we set everyone's mind to rest with respect to the unified district not changing our status with respect to the high school, then we use the right phraseology, then we can make that issue go away, I expect, but that remains to be seen.
I would expect that, since it'd be a unified district, there'd be a unified vote on the membership, the members, the real question would be whether or not we've got two or one. I suspect that the real question is gonna be, just in terms of how the, how we're allocated.
So, it's question who preempts who?
Well, and it may very well be that the existing vote made by the towns' school districts at that time trumps everything.
That's the one.
And so, you're, everybody's still a member.
So, what we have to do is.
So, that would be the simplest answer, is nothing changes.
Yes, exactly.
And it's possible.
Okay.
Pretty good question to put on one of those, my district, all district meetings, perhaps.
Does everyone have a copy of the questions that Chris sent around from the unification? I think before we begin, rather simplistic thing of the schedule, the timeline, we should dive into that in connection with the superintendent's comments, just so we go down the list here before we take a look at that schedule. So, name for the unified district, that's something we'll have to address. I think the assumption that everyone sitting around this table is that it won't change.
The Athens Grafton Unified School District.
Correct, that's right, so it'll just have the word unified in it as opposed to joint contract. Anyhow, we are aiming for a vote in November of next year, in theory. Can the new school be operational by July of two thousand and nineteen? The new school.
That was one I think the lawyer needs to weigh in on.
The new school.
The new entity.
He means entity.
He means a new district.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I called it a school, but.
Yeah, okay, okay.
The new entity.
The new entity.
A grandiose building we're gonna build that we know about.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get working on that. Do you need to have a provision, the articles about closing a school in the future, or do the existing state statutes cover that? Another question for the lawyer, this one, I think.
Yeah.
Is there a need to address the union agreements in the articles, the union agreements?
Meaning the collective bargaining.
Meaning collective bargaining.
Probably some mention needs to be made of them, I think, but again, it's.
Does that reference, will that reference the S U? Is that how we can read this, of course?
Yeah, so, that's kind of a tail wagging the dog thing.
It would, I think, I think it would just be as simple as the union agreements that Athens and Grafton have entered into.
Continue to.
Will continue, but now under the new entity.
Of the succeeding obligation.
I think you would probably, you would probably actually just continue that, and not even, the union would say all contractual agreements.
Is anything going to be done?
Yeah, because it would be, it would be any contractual agreement.
Let's move on to Chris, because this is actually the, I think, the big one.
Yeah, I think number five has a choker in it. Is anything going to be done with the Athens building before the vote, or is it going to become the property of the new unified district? Those are two questions there, yeah. That's something we will really truly have to pose.
I did, but.
Yeah, we don't have an answer for that right now, or anything like it.
Yeah, selling it was very, at least when we went at it the last time, is a very, very complicated process, which is why we were not able to culminate a deal with the town of Athens when we attempted to do it, to divest from it last time, you were not on the board. And so, you wind up into some really funky issues, now unless the laws have changed, I mean, that's why we wound up with an overinflated price that we had to stick with. So, I mean, unless there's been changes in the law, that's something that, there is law governing how that's, how those are, how that's dealt with.
I mean, that's the process of divesting, same. You, Jack, were looking at some original documentation, were you not?
Yeah.
What do you conclude from that?
The original documentation is that the, that the liability that made everybody worry is a liability that is strictly applicable, and I actually had a lawyer check, just because I was curious, he seemed to think that the, that liability showed up if you sold the building to a for-profit or private entity, that if you're selling it to a town, municipality, another district, that aggregated liability of taxes, which seems to be part of the issue, doesn't apply. And that seems to be what the language states. The actual deed does not have a tax provision in it, what you have in it is a note on the copy by the town clerk of Athens back in the late sixties, early seventies, it is not governing on the deed itself, so there is no, that's, that's the way that, and in fact, it says explicitly that there can be no addendum to the deed, but it's not contained within the body of the deed and signed, so that lets you know that.
The deed is the deed.
The deed is the deed.
And it's done, okay.
It's a done deed.
So, I mean, that's as far, that's as deep a dive as I plan to get into this, and you're welcome.
Yeah, so add the inflated value.
As I recall, we were required to have an appraisal of the property, and that became the value, even though we would have preferred to have sold it for significantly less than the appraised value.
Sell it to the town of Athens for, say, one dollar.
Right, but there was a requirement, as I recall, that we get, that we have an appraisal, which is why we came up with a price of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars or something like that, which of course was, you know, non-pallatable to the town, and I don't blame them.
Yeah, I know.
But that was, again, I, I don't recall all of the detail, but I do remember that that became the real sticking point on the whole thing, and again, it was, we were obligated to do that. I guess, I guess you're obligated to somehow develop a fair market value.
And there was state education thrown into that mess, too.
Yeah, yeah.
That had to be paid back.
Now, again, things may have changed, I don't know, you know, but just remember when we waded through it, that's, we were like, ugh.
So, we have to burn it down. That's a joke.
Joe, the thing is, you have to determine how much of the, what you have, is your gift, and how much of it is added value.
That's a joke.
By improvement. Well, usually, I'm the one that does this, it's your play. So, the gift as opposed to any amendments and improvements starts to become an issue, but, you know, that's not part of the deed.
One possible way forward, and I don't know what folks from Athens think, would think of it, but it may be possible, a lawyer might tell us that it's actually cleaner to put in the articles of agreement that all the property is gonna become transferred to the new unified school district, and then have a very clear protocol for how you dispose a property as a unified school district in your articles.
In effect, you set new ground rules at a time of unification.
Exactly, because now you, then you would have said everything's now are the unified school, which kind of eliminates this strangeness with the joint contract and the fact that Athens still owns that building, and yet, it's.
But we have my, that's.
Yeah, it's being controlled by the joint contract, so.
Athens, Athens the school district, Athens the building, not Athens the town.
Right, right, right.
So, Athens the town would still have to buy it back.
So, I don't know if that would make it clear to do it that way.
Or you could do a lease for a dollar a year for the town, the problem, what I answered, there are many different, yes, you could do it. One of the things about selling off a property to government agency or nonprofit is, because my old town of Abington closed a school years ago, is the way it was set up was that they put the building out to bid at auction, but they had in it the stipulation that if it was a private buyer, the private buyer had to pay all the passing encumbrances to the state and all this other stuff, and so the winning bid was ten dollars by the town of Abington, and that may be what you do here.
We'll figure this out. What I'm proposing, because this is kind of the, I was gonna use an old English expression, but I won't, blank factor in this, in this whole set of relatively clean issues, and that we set aside the January unification meeting to discuss precisely this and this alone, if that's agreeable to the committee members, so we get our hand around. In the meantime, we probably all have some homework to do on how and when. What I would ask Chris to do in this regard is to determine whether or not through the lawyer, we can set new ground rules through the unification process, because that would be very clean. Is that agreeable, Chris?
Yeah, let me make sure I can get that.
Yeah, I hear you, yeah.
It might be a.
So, you'll let us know if you can pull that chain?
Yes.
Okay, get it, if we could get something for the January meeting, that would be good, because we need to get this thing resolved, because this is kind of the three-hundred-pound canary in the corner. Okay, moving on to, let's wait, you think, what will be the composition of the new board? Will members be elected only by their towns as opposed to an at-large? I'm assuming that everyone would be more, well, let's go back to first principles, the less things change, the easier of a sell draw we have, right? So, if it allows the towns to individually elect their members to the board, then that's probably our preference, and so if there's an impediment to that, let's know it, but other than that, let's say yeah.
The converse to that, though, is then you're always carrying a town thing into everything you do.
Yeah, we are, because that's the way taxes are structured.
Okay, I mean, I just, you know, I guess, and I don't know how the taxes are structured in Saxton's River versus Bellas Falls.
Interesting.
Was that, is it one big thing?
There's a village.
There's a village, okay, so that's, that's a difference, okay.
That's it, same as.
Okay.
But it'll be, it's an easier sell that way.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because you don't want either town going like this, that these people are doing this. Because you don't want either town going like this, that these people are doing this to my taxes.
Right.
I also think the, the reality is that, just have some geography here. You know, if, if the old Athens road actually was passable, you'd actually be able to get easily from the center of Athens to the center of Grafton. Since it's not, there's still.
At least you shouldn't try it.
There is this long, there's this, there's this long loop that, you know, from the furthest end of Grafton to the furthest end of Athens, it's the real thing. And I think that the two communities have distinct identities. I think the largest emotional argument is you don't want to be dissolving those identifications, and I think it's important for both communities to keep them.
And it's an easier sell.
There's that, yes.
How, so that's my suggestion, and I see heads nodding, so I, I think perhaps, go ahead, you were going to say something.
So then the next question is the number of board members.
Yes, okay.
Right.
Why would that change?
Well, you might want it to. Here I will pose it. I mean, first of all, you're, as I recall from the census data I was looking at, a five-member board split nicely three Grafton and two Athens proportionally. It solves some problems you have, which is, you have our time getting board members out here. I remember they nearly broke your arm at a town meeting.
It happens to be a bit of a role here.
But, yeah, but, but we've had continual.
It's a good thought.
Open seats. I mean, finding eight people in your two towns is, that is a lot of board members.
It's a bit of an embarrassment, too.
And the other, you know, much larger towns run their five-member boards, and it's fine. All you got to do is send three people there for four.
That's, you know, I, I don't know if we're going to make an executive decision on that one, but that one, I'm personally, I'm very open to that, too, for all those reasons. Heads nodding on that, Ed, do you have an issue with that?
No, I think that makes more sense.
Right.
My, my, I just don't want to have anything that stands up as an issue in opposition to it. I, I, if we're being purely rational, absolutely, but I'm not sure that's necessarily the case. I've watched with amusement some of the new unified school districts. There are, there are state legislators, state legislatures that are smaller than some of them, because they made sure every small village had full representation. I, I think the concern I have is that when we have a, we have shifts in relative populations, we all have to be careful about making certain that we respect that.
That's true. Now, we, in our discussions with our communities, we must always emphasize the difference between town population and school population. And, and, and that hasn't, the, that the town population ratio has really not changed in 40 years significantly, that I'm aware of. Sorry, 60 years in my case, but.
And the school population.
Should have shifts all over the place.
And it becomes irrelevant, because they're all in the big pots.
Correct, that's right. And I think, Jack, as long as we keep the ratio, speaking to that, the ratios of towns similar, having a more manageable board is, I like Chris's suggestion.
I get no, I get no opposition to it, I just want to make sure that if we hear, if we hear muttering, I don't want to.
I don't know, I think, speaking for us, you know, from what I hear from the Athens folks, I don't think a 3-2 vote would be a bother for us.
I don't think it would be.
Okay.
Good.
I don't, I just don't see, I don't see that it would be an issue.
Okay, well, that's progress. There we go, Chris.
Here's one.
And that's where, because we're doing some of these things in real time, and we're, we've yet to the designer document, but do we have to have any resolutions as we go through here or not?
No, what, if you, I'm noting items you're reaching consensus on. So what I would have Mr. Stitzel do is write up these articles with these, whatever you've agreed to in there, and you're going to have plenty of time to read them over and finally approve them.
Okay.
You know, and if you want to tweak them, you can.
Good, okay. So we don't have to. How will the terms of the new board members be structured?
That's something, again, I thought the lawyer would want to.
Yeah, because the idea of having rotating terms, basically, are.
Well, and the first ones need to become, depends how soon you're, so let's say you had a vote in the fall, presumably you would elect your new board members at the same time. Your existing joint contract would not go out of existence at that time, so while you would have two boards going, you'd have a joint contract board, and you'd have your new unified school district board.
So if we, if we went with the 3-2 for Athens, for example, one, the two for Athens wanted to be like a three-year, and the other one to be a two-year.
Something like that.
Something of that nature.
Yeah.
The first time.
Steve had a way of structuring that, which was in the articles, so that they ended up being staggered.
Yeah, okay.
But that's what you want. And then the first term was kind of artificially long, as I recall. It was like a two-year term that was really a three-year term, and then they started to break into staggered.
Okay, well, there'll be some formula that's.
Yeah, he's got something, so that was.
So staggered is the word.
Yeah, you want to end up with a stagger.
So Grafton had to do like a one, the first, the first one would be one, two, and three-year, right?
I agree, yes.
That's how you stagger.
Right, and the one might actually be one and a half.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because of.
Because in November to March. I don't know, okay. Presuming that the new board members for the unified district will be elected at the time of the vote on unification, what will be the duties of the new board upon their election, i.e. policy editor? The duties themselves won't change.
Well, it's kind of a boilerplate piece that has to be in the articles, that the boards, the tasks of the board need to be specified in the articles, what that new board will be doing to get ready to operate the new school district.
Yeah, okay.
And that's why the old board is still.
The old board is still closing out business.
Right, and, and that's the other piece exactly, is that they're, the articles establish the point at which the old board ceased to exist.
Right.
And then there's a period in which the financial matters of the old board become Yeah, there's all, if you recall those articles of agreement, which were, I know, nobody wanted to read them, but there were lots of provisions that were around details about how.
The actual management is provided in a number of articles, as I recall. Okay, yeah, let's move on here, because we're getting a bit tight. Site-based advisory council, there's that old phrase.
I presume, no, I just put that in there because it was in the old article.
Okay.
I, I mean, why would you want?
Why would we want?
Right, that was for a big district.
Boy, that was easy. I remember how warm advisory council became the last hour.
Right.
Let's know.
I don't, I don't think you want to do it, I don't think they have any legal status. I just think it's a bad idea.
Places where they've had it, they're turning to mess already.
We've got the functions.
I knew they were.
What is the closeout, Dave, for the old, is this?
So we already talked about that.
So that's the, that's the, that's the foldover, right? One starts, the other stops. Cost-benefit analysis, and will taxation work under the new unified district?
So that's a big, that's a big question, what, you know, that you can talk about at another meeting.
I think.
What's, what do you want us to produce for you to show people financially how it's, what the costs and benefits are?
Well, as we've already displayed some expertise in kicking serious items down the road, having said that the building would be January, why don't we say that this little ugly duo would be February?
We have enough time now, because I mean, I'm assuming that we're going to want like model, model tax layouts for both the communities for, like I say, this coming year and some arbitrary prior year, just so you get two numbers to pick from, so people can get a sense as to what this looks like over the long term.
Okay, I think what we would, if we did this then, we, this does tie into the, into the preliminary and very simple schedule that I've provided here. That we would be able, we would be able to do this, have something actionable and discussable, if that were a word, for town meeting, which I think would be the objective. So we can just spell it out generally.
I think if people see that, so if we're going to know whether or not this screams from the raptures or not, you know, that'll tell us what we need to know.
Okay. And just moving quickly here, because I want to wrap this up. Time one, you've got a copy of, it's a very simple document. If you see problems with that, would you please get in touch with me? For those of you who don't have it, my email is rodlawrence@fermontel.net. For reasons of invasion of privacy by Google, do not use that other thing. As Chris well knows, he's, he's attempted to communicate with me through normal channels, and I've now explored. And, but let me go through this briefly. We've got a, a number of items that take, that cover from the summer through to today. What I'm proposing is that, starting in January, we start to make the communities more aware of the reality of this possibility, moving towards an announcement at town meeting in which we start to spell things out. We actually have a detailed, specific town meeting, which is, in which people come out and, and pepper their concerns by May. We'll be sending.
Excuse me, give me a second.
Yeah, sure.
Just a thought that came to mind, how about a non-binding resolution at town meetings?
It's a good thought.
Do, does the town of Athens, the town of Grafton, you know, would like the school, their individual school boards to pursue a unified school district.
In a language which is completely non-threatening.
Yeah, not threat, just a non-binding, I mean, just in case. It would give us, I think it would give us a good taste. If, if people go up in arms about it, then we're going to wait a second. If not, you're going to open up some dialogue. It's not binding, doesn't mean anything.
I, I get it, I, I think that's asking to get kicked hard. Because of the, if you do that, one of two things will happen. Either the non-binding resolution will be in favor of this, and which won't buy you necessarily anything when it comes down to the real thing, or you'll get a vote against it, which will make it almost impossible to proceed, even if it's non-binding. I, I think that the reaction I would have if I were walking into the meeting and not really being well-informed is to say, unless you've proven it to me, no, if I'm going to have to vote, that would be my answer. And I don't want to have that, I'd rather have a discussion about.
How do you, how do you introduce a discussion now?
You can have, we've, we've had discussions without, without a vote.
You can just make an announcement.
You can, we've had open discussions.
You've got other business, there's obviously other business.
All right. I don't, I was just thinking.
We've got the pro and the con, do we have any other thoughts on this around the table?
I'm not on your committee, but yeah, that, the original consolidation vote, people did not get the information all fed to them ahead of time, they had to go looking for it, and I think that's a part of the reason it failed.
Yeah, but this was a, if you didn't catch it, a non-binding resolution, just saying, let's, what, do you guys want us to pursue it?
But that's going to be the, that's going to be the first time some people hear that, and if they don't know anything about it, then it'd be like, well, no.
But that's the time, but that's the time, that's the time when you introduce, as the resolution comes about, that you, that you educate people as to what we're looking at. I don't care.
If you can do both, maybe, but I don't know, if you can do both.
You can always ask people if they'd be.
It was just a simple thought.
We don't have to resolve this.
I actually kind of like it.
Well, it's a good thought, yeah. But I, I wouldn't recommend it, because I think you're going to, like, just.
It's a surreal feeling, is it?
You're, you're going to walk in there, you're going to have to have, you're really, your ducks in a row, and I'm not sure you're going to.
We're not sure we will.
It's only two and a half months away. And, and you're going to have a lot of people who, this is the first time I've heard of it, and they're trying to force it down my throat.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Just saying, here's what we're talking about, here are the advantages.
Cool.
I originally envisioned a discussion on that, but that's what it's, it's a useful thing. Anything, I hear silence from our.
I think from the Athens end point, I think we'd do much better using that as a platform to inform people, rather than to try a vote, even though it's non-binding.
Give them six months to chew on it, we'll find out if the issues are after the meeting, I suspect.
One of my, one of my concerns is, I think on the Athens viewpoint, you know, from the budget committee meeting we just had, presenting that to the people, and then also talking to them about this.
Could be tough enough.
We would be tarred and feathered and put in stocks in the middle of the.
So then I would, so then I would recommend that we don't say anything at the town, at the town meeting, and just a simple thing that, you know, there's, there's a committee formed on the school board, and it's looking at some consolidation, we're going to have some town meetings, and that's it, two sentences.
That would be my recommendation.
Except we're never going to use the same word.
Because, you know, bringing the budget.
Whatever forum you want to use, unification.
Unification.
Yeah, okay, all right, we've got some fairly clear thought about that. All right, but thanks for stimulating the discussion, Ed. I think we're done with this committee for now.
Okay.
We've been up to the.
And let's.
We'll hold the, we'll hold the next unification committee at 6:00 prior to the January meeting.
Okay, so let's move right in.
And that's specifically the bill.
Yes, on the bill, that's correct.
Serving call to order the Grafton Contract School District meeting. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yeah, I'm leaving.
Better, feel better?
There's two of us.
All right, are there any warrants to be signed?
Yeah, I have.
Those going around, review and approve the board committee meeting, committee minutes of November 9th, 2017. Lot of motion to do that. Somebody just say it. Good, okay, now we have some discussion.
The correction on my name.
Okay.
Two N's, L-W, M-N, sorry. That's what.
Anything else? Okay, there being objections, the minutes are approved, there's no public communication, public comments, we have nothing on policy superintendent's report.
Okay, quickly then, we did get our draft copy of the integrated field review back, that's the review that the Agency of Education did for the whole district. And we actually met a fellow from the state who runs that, and today, to make revisions to it, it was actually pretty positive.
Modernly useful.
Yeah, I, I definitely thought there were some things that were useful, absolutely.
The district got actually lots of kudos for many different areas.
Good.
Which is nice. And we knew there were things to work on, and there really weren't any.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
The SU, well, we're going to talk about this, you know, so let's just leave it at that.
That's it?
Sure.
Holy mackerel. Okay. Sheila, what do you have?
I also am brief tonight. So we have 73 students, 38 of those students are from Grafton, 35 of those students are from Athens, but that number is going to change because we just received word.
Can we just have one conversation going on? If we want to discuss the warrants, please, just a little later.
They're, they're trying to figure out where the sign.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, go ahead and say.
So 38 from Grafton, 35 from Athens, but we were just notified today that a lovely family is moving out of Athens, so that number's going to go down at the time at our meeting in January. It is too bad, lovely, lovely family.
How many kids are we losing?
Two, sure, you're going to have two. The second administration of Track My Progress, which, for just a quick reminder, is an interim screening. screening tool that we use to see how the kiddos are doing, was completed last week. Yeah, last week. And so adjustments have been made to our intervention and acceleration groups recently.
Was there any, you know, anything significant in terms of what we would need to know for this?
So what I saw was some, was some nice and expected growth, especially in our K-3 wing, well, it would be 1-3 ring. There's some nice stuff going on down there. It's just based on, and it's not to say that 4, 5, 6 isn't doing amazing things as well. It's just the, the skill set and the growth that gets measured looks a little bit bigger when you're introducing how to read, how to write, and, you know, all that fun stuff. So that's not a slam against 4 to 6 whatsoever. We welcome back Rebecca Coleman to the staff. She's been out on a leave. And at the same time, had to say goodbye to Jeff Kaufman. We sent him off with a nice breakfast the other day. We really, really appreciate Jeff's work here at the, at the building. He's been great. And Jeff also filled in, he was incredibly flexible. He also filled in for our CFG teacher who was out, so for a little while, he was doing two jobs a week. And cannot thank him enough for being flexible.
We've had work for him elsewhere.
Yes, oh yeah, he's still in the district, which is a value-added piece, that's for sure. He's been great. And then just briefly, the sixth grade has been starting some independent project work. They're calling it Genius Hour, which, for folks who may or may not be aware of Genius Hour, it's actually an idea that it's all over the country in various schools. It was started by Google, and the thought behind Genius Hour from the folks at Google was if you allow your employees to spend a minimum amount of time of their week researching, working, learning about something that they are truly interested in, that has nothing to do with their own jobs, you end up with happier employees. And so as a result, some of the, a bunch of Google apps, I think Gmail actually came out of a Genius Hour piece. So, so the sixth graders, one day a week for one hour, have independent study time with, that is, independent research time, however, there are specific areas that they need to reach and different, it is guided. It's not like it's a free-for-all for an hour. CAT does have very specific questions and places that they need to get to on their road. And the reason why I bring this up is the guiding questions that some of our students are, have come up with on their own are really, really amazing and thoughtful and caring. And I'm not going to say student names, obviously, but we have a student who is looking to, to, and is raising money to find a service animal for a, someone who's a veteran for, to help support if they have PTSD. We have another student who's looking at service dogs and the benefits of service dogs and what, what they could do. And then we have a bunch of students who are looking at building accessibility, sports accessibility for differently physically abled children and individuals. These are, and then questions about how to prevent pollution, how to, how to keep people safe and whatnot. The reason why I bring it up, number one is I am hoping with CAT St. George's, the sixth grade teacher and I are going to author a article kind of describing this, the questions a little bit better, to put in the Grafton news and obviously into the GABR, because I think from our community meeting night that we had here last month, there is a depth and a richness to the folks in Athens and Grafton who are incredibly interested in supporting the students. And I think that, I think that there are, we have these wonderful kids who want to go out and do this on their own, and I'm sure there's some folks who could help guide them in their search as well. So it's, that's why I bring it up. It's something I hope you all will be really, really proud of, the students.
Is that what part of the mix there was last?
So, so one student in particular.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just...
Yeah, yeah, so there's, yeah, so that was, so a couple of the kiddos also at Thanksgiving time, put together of their own money, a basket to raffle off for Thanksgiving, and, you know, any monies extra were donated to, I think, the food bank or whatnot. We've, we've got a group of incredibly civic-minded in, students who are interested in giving back to their community anyway, anyhow, and that also embodies the mission statement of this school. So I just wanted to share that. It's just a really, a beautiful moment, and I'm really proud to be part of it. And I'm going to end on that high note.
Great note. Absolutely. Kudos to those students.
Tremendous, tremendous.
Okay, Edie, financial.
Yeah, well, we'll start with Athens. So far, everything in the revenue is on track. Right now, for grades seven and eight, we expect the cost to be $215,000. There is $240,000 in the budget, so there's a savings of $25,000. Grafton, same thing, revenues are on track. Expenditures, or the tuition, we're expecting a $2,300 surplus. And everything's going well with Ath-Graft. The only thing we weren't sure of is, for Sheila, is the building repairs that you've had to have done. Is any of that supposed to be coded to capital projects?
No, those have been straight, just stuff came up, needed to get it fixed.
Okay, all right.
But what's good, there's plenty of money in the capital projects to offset.
Absolutely.
And we've waited, we're waiting on a lot of things to offset some of the maintenance pieces that have come up.
Okay. And then the only other thing, as I had mentioned before, the health insurance expenditures are only July through December. Once we get through the transition to the new health insurance on January 1st, then all those numbers will be updated to include the second half of the year. But Ath-Graft looks good, and right now, keep our fingers crossed, both of the other districts are in the black.
Great. Thank you. Okay, SU Board.
So the Supervisor Union passed its budget for FY19 last Wednesday, six, I guess it was.
Provisionally, because we don't have the, we don't have the back numbers on that. I was kind of under the impression that we did that on a, we did that on a full basis?
Yes, yes, it was...
Oh, the SU budget, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm thinking high school budget, I'm sorry, never mind. Brain cramp, never mind.
It's okay. I can't keep on track myself.
Ah, yeah.
So, yes, the SU budget was passed. The items that are in there, as I think you all know, are district-wide food service program in-house, that's really a big, big change. So the other, I guess, major cost driver in there were some special ed costs.
Yeah, so, and if you look at it in very gross terms, the special ed costs went up about $350,000, but the entire budget only went up a little over $300,000. So there was a lot of shaving and a lot of other areas to kind of contain that as much as possible.
And also, of course, there are reimbursement, state and federal reimbursements for special ed costs that get factored in before we assess out the cost to the district. So your budget that we presented tonight, the budget meeting now has the real SU assessments in the, in the, in the Ath-Graft joint contract budget. And I think, actually, both towns fared pretty well with those assessments. They were not hugely different.
I think the part that's discretionary, because you're not really discretionary on special ed, the, the, the food change is, is an important one because it was pretty clear that what we had was almost certainly not going to be sustainable, that, that break-even budget business with a third-party contractor. So we were going to take a hit no matter what we did, and this is a hit that involves a, what should be a pretty substantial and notable improvement in what comes down the pike, particularly for outlying schools like ours. I'm looking forward to the change. I think it will show up in a lot, a lot of ways. And it's really something where we've taken the most responsible stab at a cost point that we can, given the early stages of development of the program.
Okay, also at the SU, we're in the process of a search for the Director of Special Services with a potential candidate scheduled for an interview this upcoming week.
Right.
And then the superintendent's search is on the way right now. We're in the process of, we hired a facilitator through the VSB to run through the process. Chris and I have had a first meeting with her, and we're in the process right now of establishing a screening committee. So we hope to have that done post-haste, then that committee will start meeting. School spring advertisements should be out shortly.
I think they may be there now.
Maybe now. I didn't know if it was... You know, we said by the end...
It was scheduled to be in now.
It was scheduled to be in by the end of the week. Reviewed our timeline, our timeline still looks good. So that, that process is moving along really well. I think those are the biggest things at the SU. And if there's anything else? And those are two big, pretty big things. Okay, budget. The budget committee met. We were on camera for that, so I don't know if, I mean, everybody was basically, except for Jessa. As a quick review, and anybody just jump in, basically, the big hits are going to come to the budgets because of the increase in seventh and eighth grade students. That's going to account for a hit of about $60,000 to Grafton, and about $75,000 to Athens. Athens got another large hit with a 504 and a seven and eight for about $24,000. Athens also has a deficit over, that they have to bring back in of another $25,000. And Grafton has a change in its assessment, so that's going to, it's up about 8%, so it's going to put another $45,000 into the Grafton budget because of the change in assessment based upon the changes in the field account. So in essence, there's a hit to Grafton of about $125,000. Budget's going up that much. A hit to Athens of about $131,000. We do not have official tax rates at this particular time. Early estimates, and these are strictly only back-of-the-envelope estimates, are, it could mean a tax rate raise of about 14 cents to Grafton and about 29 cents to Athens, but that is not cast in concrete by any stretch of the imagination. We will have those tax figures prior to our next meeting, and our January 11th meeting will be when we vote on the budget.
Is there one more big class going out or two more?
Well, basically, what's going to happen, it's almost, it's almost, it's almost a level out, though. As Sheila indicated, we're going to basically drop, next year, when the eighth grade goes to nine, but the, but the sixth goes to seventh, there should be four less students in, in the total pot of, of the seventh and eighth tuitions. So there'll be, there will be a slight drop next year.
Doesn't help this year.
Right now, that's what we look, but, you know, kids can move in, kids can move out, so...
But I know there was a big, 20 kids back down to 12.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's about it.
The thing that's important to realize again is the, the tuitioning, we don't have much control over, and, you know, just say to taxpayers, because we'll do it, oh my God, what's this? The reality is that the actual budget that we do have control over is effectively a flat budget. So this is just, this is a matter of, of, you know, classic big in the python problem, that you've got a bunch of kids that we're delighted to send on to middle school, but we have no way of controlling the cost of that.
Okay, so that kind of goes with the budget. The unification committee met. Again, in summation, since most of us were here, discussed questions that Chris had put up that are relating to the Athens-Grafton unification. Some are legal questions, some are just operational questions, some are just so far out there that we don't really know anything until we get some, some legal advice on them. And a schedule has been published regarding a move, a move-forward plan relative to this in terms of how we're going to attack and have further discussions relative to this, including basically after-town meeting, bringing, having some open-town meetings as this process becomes a little bit more defined. Those are targeted for May. Some earlier contacts with the select boards in February, and start a real rollout to the towns, and bringing everybody up to date starting in about January. Okay, anybody have anything else to add on that one? Okay, since that also is basically 8A.
Yeah, I put that there just in case the, the whole board needed to...
Yeah, but pretty much the whole board showed up, so...
Yeah.
Okay, so we're at 8B, review and approve the alternative structure document.
Okay, so...
I've got the big version with all the really dead trees.
Yeah.
Is this, are we different than what we saw the high school?
Well, yeah, a little bit. One of them is. So the high school, we, we got a little off track. I don't tell you what you really need to do, if you're okay with it, is approve this document. And this is, would become appendix, something like that.
That's an addition to all of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you print it up, this is a new version that I, it's only a couple of days old, so I sent it out to you on email, and this is, right, it looks like you've got it.
Oh, okay.
And this is what you, as Athens-Grafton and the Athens-Grafton Joint Contract, would be agreeing to as part of the alternative structure application. And this application is due on the 26th Tuesday. So I'm hopeful that you can approve it, or at least approve with minimal modifications that I can make. So the first piece of this talks about changing, exploring the unification. And that is all that you would be agreeing to do, would be to explore.
It looks like you'd already anticipated the seven and five here.
Yeah, Wayne Gerson sort of...
It provides us something?
It, well, it's true, because your three birds, three birds would become one. The second one is, refers to this chart that was in the big document that, around, of administrators, that administrators and others in the district put together that I, and I think you've all seen that before. The third item is about the food service. The fourth item is about staff development and focusing it more through the SU, but not exclusively. I still allow... Still allows a school to pursue, you know, for example, if you wanted to have your teachers do responsive classroom...
I'm just trying to find it.
No, not knitting.
Find something for you.
Sort of a sore subject with me right now.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. I didn't catch that last, sore subject.
So...
My flip comment.
Knitting. I was actually trying to learn how to knit. But anyway, there's some discretion for schools to, you know, chart their way with some professional development. The idea is that primarily, we would be at the SU level as an SU figure out where we needed to go, and funding it through the SU as well. The next item is about these, this particular appendix, which I thought was significant enough, so you ought to cast your eyes on it. And this is the school-setting checklist, and the, I should tell you, the Rockham Board has met, looked at all this stuff, the Westminster Board has met, looked at all this stuff, and they actually agreed on basically all the same changes. So, yeah, well, it isn't really. But they, so I went back and revised the documents, 'cause at that point, it was just, I might as well do this, and we have to approve all this really soon. And the problem we got into the other night at the high school was sort of wordsmithing starting back on the original proposal. And I have that for you, but I don't recommend, like, spending a lot of time on it. What you really need to do is argue in agreement with these things.
Yeah. Well, I thought the other was really kind of, as people signed off, you know, your chairs, if there was still tiddling to do, they could do it there without tying up the whole board and all that.
Right. But this goal-setting activity checklist is a pretty significant piece, but again, it is, in my view, or the way I've got it drafted here now, is kind of optional, 'cause some boards have, feel like going, having a retreat is a useful thing to do, and some boards would rather not.
But they're only recommended activities.
They're only recommended, yes. They started out being, not to be more than that, 'cause that was how Wayne Gerson had drafted it. He said, "No."
I'm sure you still think their annual retreat's a good idea, just 'cause, yes.
Well, I left it up to the boards to figure it out. If they want to have retreats, that's great. But the main purpose here is that there's some cohesion in terms of establishing all the board's goals for moving forward.
Was the idea to try to get these activities set up in some sort of joint way, or that they would just take place as individual boards did them? 'Cause I remember that being...
Well, after each activity, it says, whether it's an individual board, superintendent, the executive committee, the SU board.
Right, but it sounds like it's being sort of done at that biennial meeting.
Well, biennial meeting is sort of a separate issue. So, and the idea of this was to integrate slash implement that piece of, the biennial meeting with all the boards in the high school, and the state of the SU address and all that, which is mentioned there in the end. But there were two annual, two annual meetings between towns and all the boards. But everything else, really, is the member boards could choose to do or not. I mean, some boards have annual goals and action plans, some of them, you know...
You know, this is a flag I've thrown for a long time. I think that the biennial thing is a really good idea. One of the things that I always worry about is people don't know what goes on at the high school, and a lot of people don't even know what goes on at the SU. And these are really large drivers of what we do institutionally, and we need, and everybody needs to hear it, not just in reports, which we don't always do, and why.
So, anyway, that document integrates two ideas, the biennial meetings of everybody plus a process by which SU goals are more cohesive. Okay? All right. The next item on the list of, is this Out of School Programs Task Force. This has to do with the equity question, you know, are there, and we know this from our study of, you know, equity issues in the district, consolidation, that some schools have robust after-school and before-school programs, some don't. So, it's not saying that you're going to create one, but it's, the idea is to, one of the goals of an alternative structure under Act 46 is you've got to show that you are working towards equitable student activities, even though you're not a single unified school district. So, again, the idea is for everybody to be talking about the fact that, hey, you know, we have this program here, and, you know, out here at Grafton, we have to, you know, scrounge, put $2,000 more dollars in to, you know, have a full summer program. So, you know, is there something we can do, either funding from the SU level, or something that would make this more equitable?
Chris, getting into the weeds any more than absolutely necessary, would there be provisions in this kind of thing to do, program, say, if there was a program that was physically located in Saxons River, but other people, but the, you know, West West, Grafton, Athens, were involved with it, is that within the purview, right after school or summer programs?
I think that's a possibility, but that's probably a better possibility, you know. What's not really a possibility is kids going between schools during the summer. That, no. But after-school might be.
After-school, summer schools, kind of...
You can talk about it after I retire. This would be a great subject. And then, the last one was this item about the integrated field review. As I said, the report came today. And I guess there are items in there that we, you know, 'cause it does talk about whether we were cohesive as SU in certain areas or not.
Across all the schools.
Yeah, yeah. But I think the plan at this point would be to draft something that we add to our submission to the agency after we make the initial. So, because you haven't even looked at it yet, we don't even have the final document. We're just drafting it today. So...
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's really, I do have another, yet another copy, if you haven't printed it out, of the proposal. Really, really, rather not redraft it again, as Jack pointed out, kind of after the high school meeting.
I've got mine. You've got yours.
Yeah.
Do you have mine?
I have the...
This is...
This is the university?
It's iterated.
It's the 1211 version, if you know.
No, I have the, I have the other version.
Yeah, the 1130.
But there's no, what is in there is, the wording is fixed, there's some awkward sentences that were fixed, there were many just things that needed to be correctly written. Not a lot of...
A lot of substantive...
Well, they're right, not substantive changes, and what there is, is reflected in this document. This is what's...
You have the geography thing in, which is, which was my big, you know, flag on this initially.
Okay. Well, we have an action item here, which is this, this document.
Yep.
Okay? So, we actually will need three separate motions on this, 'cause we have three lords. All right?
Yeah, I think technically you do, yes.
To make it clean, okay.
Yes.
So, I need a motion that the Athens Grafton Joint Contract Board accept this document and authorizes the chair to sign on their behalf.
So moved.
So moved. Okay. Any discussion?
I don't know that it matters, but I originally hoped we would, you know, put maintenance in this list of things that we might do in the future, but it's not anything I'm, you know, not a sword I'm gonna fall on if it's, people feel uncomfortable with this in paragraph two. The things that we might look at to merge...
What it says, continue to pursue potential economic...
Some of it scales.
As I said, I'm, you know, innovating.
Plenty loose enough to encompass that.
Outside of that, I'm afraid.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any objections? There being no objection, this motion is passed. I will now call to order the Grafton School Board meeting, meeting of the Grafton School Board, for the sole purpose of approving this document and authorizing the chair to sign it. So moved by Jack. Any discussion amongst the three of us? Any objection? There being no objection, the motion is passed. I'll, it's up to you.
Okay. I move that the Athens School Board considers this document to sign and to pass, and I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay? Anybody in favor? All right, so moved.
Okay. So, we got, we will sign this. Move on.
I'll have to sign a copy to you.
Wait, what's your chair?
This, okay. Okay, so we're gonna move on then to review and approve the continuous improvement plan.
So, this has been quite an adventure. Part of the reason we are bringing this to you tonight is because this, along with the other schools' continuous improvement plans, is an appendix, part of an appendix in this Act 46 document. So, we have been working with the state, and Missy Wilkins has been working with all the principals on getting these drafted out. The hard part has been that the state doesn't really know the format they want us to follow.
Why are you always surprised?
I know. There was supposed to be a big meeting about the format of this, wasn't there? It was like a week, yeah, and it was canceled, yeah.
Yeah.
And I happen to know why it was canceled, and I'm not going to go into that. So, in any case, the continuous improvement plan is, is an important document in terms of being a part of this continuum of planning and assessment that's all the schools are now expected to do, and it's a requirement in the school quality standards, which is a legal document. State Board of Education is approved. And the idea of this is that periodically updated, and in fact, the next update will probably be next month, 'cause, yeah, I know, we will, the results of the integrated field review are supposed to be integrated into all of our continuous improvement plans. But for right now, we need one. We need one that's approved and acceptable. And so, Missy Wilkins has been kind of our, she's our curriculum grant person, and she's been working as the point of contact in the SU with each of the principals, so that the plans are formatted the same, and that they are moving towards the same sets of goals. So, you can see, there's a format here, you do a needs assessment, and so, for example, the first goal is literacy, implementing best practices in literacy acquisition to meet specific needs of our students. And so, Sheila and others, I'm not sure quite what the, whether you took this with the staff...
And talking about the needs assessment, yes, we did.
Yeah.
This was done at the end of the last school year, and then we touched upon it again in June.
Right.
And then again, the fall, so...
And then you have the, what do we want to accomplish, which is our specific goal by 2018, eighty percent of the students will be at or above grade level expectation in reading, fluency, and comprehension.
That's about 10% improvement. Is that what you're trying to say?
Seeing the negative number in the first part of the needs assessment, you have the 30% below grade level, and then you're talking about 80% at, so it would be...
Yeah, that's where I got the 10%.
Like, if it said, if it, if you had 20% not at grade level, and...
Yep.
'Cause they're just...
I think we...
Or 70 and 80.
Yeah, 70 and 80, or 20 and 30.
Sure.
So, they just, 'cause if you read that not, if you read it too fast, you're like, oh, we got only 30% of them are reading, oh, wait, not reading, so...
You quickly suss that out.
Yeah.
So, anyway, the next part is the changes that, after consideration of staff, and who can be made to bring this about, and are the benchmarks, finally, are the benchmarks for how will we know or approve. There's a number of assessments that I mentioned there.
Just out of curiosity, don't we already have a literacy coach or something to function like that?
No.
No? Okay, so is that an addition, is that additional staffing?
It's coming. It's actually coming from the SU. Just today, we discussed it at our admin team meeting. It is something that is coming sooner or later.
I mean, just, I'm just saying, is there a budget, you know, is there a budgetary...
It's coming out of, it's coming out of C F G Title II funds.
I think, oh, that's what...
Yep, so nothing out of the local budget.
All right. And you're, you have a high degree of confidence, this will be sufficient to make the change and the improvement?
Well, I think, I think...
Through the high school, you can ask these questions a lot of the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think that they're, I do feel that they're realistic, and that they will work with the structures we already have, and the skill set of the teachers here in the We need some polishing on things, is the way I look at it. There's some areas to polish up in regards to literacy.
The second goal has to do with, take care of emotional, behavioral needs.
Which I just want to add, is one of the tougher ones to try and measure. So, you know, how do you, how do you measure increased student success from a social-emotional perspective? So, one of the places that we have hard numbers in are behavioral referrals. So, that was, that's where I went with that.
Is this double counting? I mean, do we really have a quarter of our kids who've had behavioral referrals from the past, or only 16?
Those are, that's real data.
No, I mean, is that 16 referrals, or is that 16 students that have had referrals?
Resulting in force?
Oh. I just wondered, well, I just was trying to understand this.
A referral can be, could be one kid 16 times, 16 kids one time.
But it's actually, it's real, those are real numbers.
I just want to know, you know, do we have, like, a quarter of the kids who've had referrals, or is it, we've had a couple of kids that are really troubled that are constantly having problems?
Both. I would say both.
All righty. There you are.
And again, those, so I'm comparing last year's numbers to this year's numbers, is how, you know, how I'm going about it, to try and find some hard data.
Yeah.
The next goal's around professional development. One of the, one of the pieces we're working on actually at the SU is hoping to have, by the time I'm gone, really a cohesive system for identifying professional development needs. That's sort of a...
I think we're on a really good path there as well, though.
And the last goal's around engagement families. These goals are, by the way, sort of prescribed.
This family engagement is strictly, none of this is about student involvement and planning or student involvement and special ed or any of that, this is strictly, you know, sort of all the other stuff.
This follows the educational quality standards, so that's where this, that's where the, these four buckets in regards to the content are what we are reviewing right now. That's where that comes from, and that's one of the requirements of the SIP.
Stay tuned for more.
But just so everyone knows as well, so not only have the staff, myself, and Missy Wilkins been working on this document quite extensively, it was also checked, it was also edited and checked out by someone at the, at the AOE as well, because I had some pretty specific questions that I wasn't willing to go without an answer from. So Missy was gracious enough, and the woman at the AOE who is in charge of this piece was gracious enough to go in and check it out and give me very specific feedback, so just, it's, so we're on a good path here as well. And I'm not just saying it because I'm the primary author.
Good. Okay. So, we need to approve, we need to approve this. So do I have a motion to approve the continuous improvement plan as presented?
Do...
Do I have a motion? Okay. Do we have any additional discussion, or has everyone been asking their questions as we go along?
And I would, my one comment would be for board members or community or folks that are out there, I mean, there is this opportunity to have more pieces to this, so it's...
This is a starting document.
Yeah.
And it's a living document, so it will change.
We want to hear about that if that's the case. Kind of feel like we're missing something completely, you know, by all means.
Has any of the PTG folks seen this at all, particularly that last one, the one about community?
So this, this isn't something that I would have brought to a PTG meeting, it's just...
Well, not before you stopped, before we did.
Right, yeah, exactly. I mean, but I can't, I mean, we've got a meeting next Tuesday, so...
It just seems to me that that's sort of a point in place. It would strengthen them, and it would achieve part of this goal.
Thanks for the suggestion.
And I'm very big on PTGs.
Okay, good. Other comments, other questions? Anybody in disagreement? There being none, the motion passes. Okay, any other new business? Warrant discussions?
I think this is it.
Yes, it was, it was...
There's a couple of half-graft ones in here that if you want to look at.
There was one question I had, just because I'm a sure person to ask it. It was, it was a payroll item, but it was for, it's for JP Morgan Chase. Why is there a JP Morgan Chase on the payroll register?
It's a payroll deduction.
Oh, okay, there you go, that's it, thanks.
Cool, nice catch. Okay, no appointments, resignation, directors' comments. Charles? Lynn? Jack? Okay, cool. So the next of our, the date of our next board meeting is January 11th. We'll also have, is there a budget meeting? We'll have a budget meeting, and we'll also have a unification meeting, which we'll both prior to that meeting, so we'll be starting at 5:30. Feel free to join in for the fun and games. I would like to wish everyone happy holidays, however you may or may not celebrate, whatever you may or may not do.
Should I do this for you?
Whatever it may be, just enjoy yourself over the next few weeks and have a great time. The meeting's now adjourned.